Looks good.
You're good.
It's all right.
It's all right?
Thank you.
Are we good?
Yep, you're on.
All right, okay. I'd like to call to order the September 21st, 2023 Columbia Borough Council Budget Work Meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Council President Singh?
Here.
Councilperson Kaufman?
Here.
Councilperson Stall?
Here.
Councilperson Fisher?
Here.
Councilperson Price? Councilperson Whitner?
Here.
Councilperson Bergard?
Here.
Mayor Lutz?
Here.
I'd also like the record to reflect we have three council candidates in attendance. Would anybody like to offer an invocation? Please, if you'd like, please ask for a moment of silence. And Peter, would you like to lead us in a flag sheet?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive and information sessions, there were none. Is there any additions, additions or reorganization of the agenda? I don't think so. I have a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Excellent, second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Stall to approve the agenda as published. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And citizen comment on agenda items only, we did not have any signups. Mayor Lutz, Chief Briermer?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you. And so we're down to what we came for. The first discussion, first view on the 2024 budget. Just the, we're only looking at the general fund, Fund O1 this evening. Mark, do you want to go ahead with the presentation?
So thank you guys all for being here. I always find it interesting that, to me, this is probably one of the most important things that we do as a, as a local government is to set policy on how money be spent. So I want to walk through tonight. Tonight, we're not looking for any formal action from council. This is just review. We'll go through the other funds as we do this. Then we'll be hopefully prepared to advertise this in November and adopt it in early December. Okay? As we get out of room, the plan tonight is not necessarily go line by line. If there are items you want to bring up, please bring up and we can discuss them individually. We'll take notes, we'll adjust as needed and necessary, and then bring this back for a second review once we have a chance to go through it tonight. Okay? But I always like, yeah.
Also, Mark, note that there are some key numbers that are not finalized and will not be finalized till the middle to the end of October. And that is the property tax valuation and any of the insurance and so forth related to employee benefits.
And the employment tax also.
And the employment tax.
That is correct.
We will get that until the middle of October from the county. Sorry.
Good.
I didn't remember that.
I know. So I just want to start, we did this, yeah, last year, I think, and the year before, just kind of go through an overview of borough and our, and our processes, our funding. I do this not because we don't necessarily know this, but this is a reminder. And again, when we're done with the meeting tonight, we'll put this out on the website so the residents can see it and go down through it. Okay? This is a list of the current elected officials and staff we have here. I have several different work charts in here. This is the first one that kind of overviews the entire borough, looks at the entire structure of who we are. To break it down further, this is the chart for our current, current charter for a proposal next year for the police department. And this one is for the borough itself, the borough side. One of the things that has come up in several of our discussions is looking at our personnel numbers. And I know that there have been some questions in the past, you know, do we have enough? Do we need more? Where are we? So Tammy and I went down through the, and Jack went down through and looked at our staffing numbers over the past few years. Police started out at 38 total staff and are now down to 35. Borough started out at 35, now we're down to 24. The borough dropped significantly in that timeframe because we were still holding on to some of the staff from the wastewater plant as those left, they were not replaced. So that is a part of those number changes. But I also wanted to just point out that one of the goals I think we've had, that I've had, is to, I hate using the pen dot term, but the right size to borough. Making sure that the staff we have align with the goals and policies that we're trying to achieve. And to maintain a level of service that we think is appropriate for this borough. Would I love to have a public work staff that had six more people on it? Sure. Be fantastic. Would we love to have more code staff? Would we love to have more office staff? Would we love to have more police officers on the street? Sure. But we're trying to get to the balance of what we can afford and what we need and strike that balance between the two. I keep this one in here all time just to remind us, remind me of how many different things, different boards, different committees that we have here in the borough. We're very busy. There, there's more, again, there's more that I'd love to do, but we have a lot going on. And it's exciting to see all the different things that we're involved in, and the different process we're involved in. One of the commitments I made early on in this job is to ensure that each one of these boards has the support of the borough. When I, when I first got here, there were some boards that hadn't had a conversation with borough staff in a long time. And I wanted to make sure that every board, every committee knew that they could pick up the phone, talk to somebody here, someone in our staff, to say, hey, here's what's going on, or I need help, or can you put a package together for a meeting? Can you get an agenda out, et cetera? So we support all these different boards. Grab this for you. Numbers? Appreciate it. It's always good to know, and as long as I've been doing this, I always like to ask the question, who are we? Who is, who is Columbia? What do we look like? Communities are always changing. And that change, I think, is always a unique look at why people live where they do, why people do what they do, why they do the jobs they do. So it's, it's good to see who we are and the, the changes that are happening in this community. And again, if we had time, I'd love to dig deeper into this, provide more of this data. I think it's really interesting to look at. What else do we do? One of the big things that we are charged with is maintaining our public infrastructure. We have a lot of roads. All those roads take work. Some of that work can be challenging, okay? We, we hope and pray every year that we get a road project that goes without a hitch. Today, that'd be nice. We maintain a lot of park. I'll say the mayor and him and I had the great honor and privilege of being at a check presentation today. DC and R came down and presented a check for 116,000, I think it was, for upgrades to Jensen Park. That's exciting to see, you know, improvement's coming. We're going to have another check presentation to look at the upgrades to Maple Park coming here soon. Every one of those parks that we own take time and energy to maintain. If we're going to have something, my attitude has been and will remain, let's do the best that we can. So I want to look at these parks, want to clean them up. I know that it's been a council drive for a while now is to, to look at our land, to ensure that programs are going on in our parks, to ensure that those parks are looking as good as they can. So that takes time and energy to maintain these facilities. And sharing with all of us, if you haven't been to all of them, get out there. It's, we, we are blessed. You know, I took a walk the other day, just walked from here down to the river, and you stand there. It's just, we get lost down there. You get to stand there for hours and just look at the amazing blessing we have. There's some of the creeks around here, there's other parks, just, we, we are blessed with some beautiful park space here. All right, enough of the feel-good stuff. Here is a property assessment data for 2022. We're still waiting on 23 data to come in. But this is a great snapshot of the value of the land here in the borough, the value of the buildings, and how that value relates to the tax base that we bring in. So point your attention to the bottom line. Every mill of property tax brings in around $428,000. Our millage rate is currently at eight mil, okay? This next one, I take no credit for. I completely stole it from somebody else. But I think it's a great visual look at how local taxes are divided up. As long as I've been working in, in local government, I'm shocked at how a lot of people just don't understand where the local tax dollar goes and what percentage goes to what and how it's spent. Shocking to me about how many people even know what municipality they live in. They have a Columbia address. I live in Columbia. No. You live in West Hefield. So for every $1 of taxes, that's how it breaks down. 71 cents goes to the school district, 21 cents comes here, 8 cents goes to the county. Based on our current millage rates. So in looking at this, Tammy and I had a thought, let's go back in time. And, and I just wanted to put together a chart that looked at the millage rates over time. So going back all the way to 2004, that's what the total burden, tax burden on our residents has looked like over the past years. In 2009, the borough raised the millage rate to eight mils. It's been consistent at eight mils until 2017, going into 18, which is when the county reassessment took place. And under state law, any municipality cannot increase its revenue by too much. There's only a certain percentage you can increase it by. So almost everybody had to reduce their millage rate that year so that the tax burden suddenly doesn't jump after the reassessment of all properties. That's why in, in 18, you see a big drop, and it starts to walk back up again. But that's what the, over time, that's how the, the millage has, or the tax burden on this community has panned out. Why do I spend a lot of time on, on this issue is, over the past year, as we have talked over and over again about the fact that we have been, for many years, dipping down into our reserve fund. And we're trying to, and we're working hard to reverse that trend. I would still love to get to the point where we live on, I would say, 90, 95% of our revenues, and the other percentage goes into reserve fund and goes into the capital fund, the fund of products that we're doing. I think that's a great goal to get to. We were there years ago, I'd like to get back to that. To do that, we have to look long and hard at our, all of our revenue sources, and we have to look long and hard at our spending. So this is for Pete. Often we look at, at funding as being one big giant piggy bank, and we're all just dipping out of the same bank. Well, in municipal finance, it doesn't look that way. We have different funds. Each of those funds have limitations or, or things that they can and cannot be spent on. So I just want to go over these. We can go over them every time. If you have any questions, call Tammy, not me. She knows better than I can. Fund O1 is our general fund. That would, that's what funds the day-to-day operations here in the borough. That covers buildings, salaries, lights, electricity, fuel, cars, et cetera. Fund 18, that was the money we got from the sale of the wastewater plant. That is currently the capital fund that we are spending out of. In 2021, we got a allocation of American Recovery Act funding. We put that in the new fund, if you remember, Fund 21. We are, we adopted a resolution back in, how many, Heather, 22, 21, to consider that fund loss revenue?
Spring of 22.
Spring of 22. So we have now technically, by resolution, absorbed that money into our budget, though we're still tracking it in a separate account, should it be in audit.
Well, yeah, because we have to.
Correct.
Yes, we do. Per, per the ideas that came out, we have to have.
So we track it? We track all that separately. Fund 30 is the old fund that came from the 2016 bond refinanced. To be clear, that one's still on the books, but we don't use that one currently. We spent that down fixing up the market house. And when we get the ARPA money, the RAPP money back, we owe, we oversells Phase 2 of that project. We'll be funding certain projects out of Phase 2 of that. So don't count on Fund 30 funding anything else, okay? That one's pretty much used up. Last one is Fund 35, and that's the Liquid Fuels Fund. In short, we get money every year from the state based on the total miles of roads we have here in the borough. There's a formula. Every, every municipality gets so much based on their miles. That goes into buying paving materials. We can buy equipment out of it. If it's dedicated towards the street department, you can do other things like that. Okay? So there's limitations on that, but all that goes in basically into maintaining our road system.
And that's where we pay our, our streetlights from?
Streetlights come out of that. Yeah, we shifted that out a couple of years ago. Any questions on those? Make sense? So take those 11 by 17 sheets you got sent in front of you with all kinds of numbers on them and compress them down. This is what it looks like. And I don't expect you to have to be able to read all this, but just want to give you a visual of where the money comes from. 58, 57% of our income comes out of property taxes. You see the breakdown as you go down through. It, there are a few other sources of revenues that are possible for boroughs to have. These are all the ones that we currently tap into. Yes, sir?
General fund.
This is just the general.
This is the general fund.
There's no other funds of money in that?
Yes. So Liquid Fuels money is not in here, other grant money that goes into other things is not necessarily in here. Okay? So this is general fund revenues. If you've been following the news, Langston City and about four other cities have recently been studied and analyzed in, in an attempt to look at the distribution or the sources of revenues for local municipalities. Almost every manager I talk to, every municipality that I, that I talk to talks about the fact that they're, we are by nature creatures of the state, as they call it. We are created by the state. We are empowered by the state to do certain things. I think about every municipality struggles to meet the needs of their community with the revenue sources they have. There have been many requests sent to Harrisburg to, to reevaluate and relook at this. Langston City right now is putting together a study committee to look at becoming a home role city so they can change some of the rules and change some of the parameters in how they raise funds and how they look at things. Is that the best answer? That might be for them. I don't know what, what the best answer is for us as a borough. But I think it's, it's something that all of us have to look at. Is, is this current system creating difficulty for local municipalities? Or is it creating ways for us to move forward? And so I think, watch, watch Harrisburg, watch news going forward. I think it's going to be a challenge when you look at how we get our money, where it all comes from, and what the sources are of those funds. That's the revenues. The expense chart, took me a while to get it so you can even possibly even see it. That's the, if you go in your chart, so you look down, that's just sub-tolling all the subcategories down in through there. That's where we spend all of our money. Okay? Broken down by departments in different categories, that's where it all goes. Back up one slide. Look at the bottom, right-hand corner. Our revenues are estimated at just shy of 7 million. Our total expenses right now are projected at about 8.3. This is not new for us. This is how we've been, we've been getting by year after year. Last couple of years, you've heard us say that the end of the year, we finished out okay. We did, because we, we saved money. We didn't spend everything that was in the budget. We had positions that went unfilled. And that's how we make ends meet. But on paper, when we start the year, this is usually what it looks like. So that's a, a quick overview of everything. I think now, Heather, turn it back to you, and let's walk down through, and Tammy, and let's see what questions you guys have on specific areas in the budget. We can go down and, and look at different areas, et cetera, different categories. And let's now hang on to go.
Do you have the thing from the budget bulletin that shows what we can and can't get money to?
Not in here, but I can pull that up.
Okay, yeah, can you pull that up? Just so, to refresh everyone, we got guidance from PSAB. I went through that budget bulletin. There was one, one item in there that I've questioned and I have Evan to look at. In the Act 511, there's different things that you can, you can charge. And one of them is for mechanical devices. And it gives the example of pinball machines and things like that. My question is, can we use that on these PA skills machines that seem to be in every food shop? And we have in here, that could be.
I did a little research on that, Heather, and the state's not clear on it.
Yeah, I know.
Unfortunately, yeah, the state is not very, not clear.
So I don't think we can count on that this year.
Yeah, they're not very clear on their guidelines and how much you're allowed to charge because it all falls under the state gambling law thing.
Yeah. So I did look at that.
We talked with Senator Roman and Representative Miller, Miller's afternoon about that. And they're looking at.
Yeah. Paul, Paul Ref seems to think that the state is going to take action on that, and that would preempt anything that we would do anyway. So hopefully, if they do take action on it, they will send some of that downstream to us because we're the ones having our community.
I also had a question about that Act 511, the mechanical, are these taxed? There's places in Columbia where they have gaming machines, where they bet. Do we, can we take advantage of that?
If they're actual slot machines, that is a different thing. But if they're the PA skills game, that's what I was just talking about. That it's not real clear. But if they're slot machines, it's all, it's, if they are true gambling slot machines, like in a casino, that's under a different.
Like, I've never been there, but the Stoggers, they have betting machines, don't they?
I think they're all skills games.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they're part of the list. It's on two pages, so.
Yeah, I've been asked about the, the skills games in the LinkedIn group for PSAB to see if anyone is using it for that. And they all said, no one responded that they were, so, oh, I have a good idea.
So as, as a borough, these are the different organizations that we are allowed to give money to directly.
Mark, before you get too far into those slides, could you send council the slide presentation you did?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to have the same thing. It's very good.
Yeah. It's one bit rough. I can't see it, we're going through.
Yeah. Post it online tomorrow morning as well, so the public can see it.
We'll, we'll start, we'll just go down through the revenue. If anyone has any questions. As mentioned before, the property tax and everything under 310. Isn't, well, the earned income tax and the local services tax, we'll get those numbers from the county sometime in October.
Yeah, and then what I did with the revenues is a 3% increase on any, based on the average of collection for the eight months to date so far. So that's where those numbers came up from. But yeah, the, so I would say that that's why the ones, the top ones look like they're stagnant is because I won't have that, or like Heather said, till the middle of October, like October 15, somewhere around there.
And keep in mind, when you're looking at the 2023 current actuels versus the 2023 budget, at the end of August, that's about 67% of the year, so.
Correct.
Just keep that in mind. Yeah, I, good call on lowering the deed transfer for next year. I think we could probably even go lower than that because.
It didn't really slow down.
Yeah, once I guess, I think once we get through September, the first three quarters, because it has definitely decreased due to the rising interest rates of homes. So last year was like a banner year, and the end of 2021 was really good, too.
Yeah. So that's definitely a good call on lowering that. I like that we have split out the ordinance violations between police and codes because it helps give us better ideas on the revenues and expenses for each department. If we, if we end up getting the wastewater plant, the one section of it sold before we adopt this, will we take that off completely or will we leave it on there because they'll still have that set on par? Because they'll still have it in the parcel?
Would you be able to redo the deed? Or redo the base?
Most of the funds in this truly are for the maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, which is the consolidated lots that we are selling. That was separated from the cost of maintaining the public workshop area. So you know, we could probably, we'll probably leave it on the line, I need to zero it out.
Okay.
Are we just focusing on the revenue right now?
Yeah.
Can I ask another question? The special purpose taxes, do we do any of that?
Special purposes? No.
We haven't, we have not taken any of those yet. But that's what we're talking about is, is you can do a, a fire tax to help fund your fire department. You can do a debt reduction tax. You can do other things that, the streetlight tax you can, you can put on. All those then give you markets and fund specific things for those taxes.
Yeah, that's what we talked about last year with doing a tax just for the debt service.
Yes.
And there's rules on each of those as to how much they can be. There's millage limits and things like that.
Yes.
Anything else on revenue? Yes?
The third item down, so RET, current year uncollectible, 5% could be explained as.
Yes. We put, the, the line item 301100 is if everyone pays their property tax in the year, that's how much we would get. But it's standard that, it's standard industry practice that not everyone is going to pay their tax in the given year. So, I'm sorry, I used that industry standard. So we assume 5% is not going to be paid. And that's what that return current year uncollectible 5% is. That's the amount that we would count on. That's the amount that we would count on not receiving out of the full taxable amount.
So then under the green, where it's nothing, the year got to get over before we really see what that's going to be.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. And could, when you discuss an item, could you give us the numbers?
Yes.
So we know where to go.
Yep.
I know that my pages, I started with the front. I didn't know how you were going to do this.
And Frank? There are bigger copies. Deb has some, if you'd like one to make it easier to see.
Thank you. Have we just, we're not going page by page then with revenue? We can ask whatever?
Yeah, ask, ask whatever, because I mean, I don't want to go line by line.
I don't know what the number is.
Yeah, just give us a.
I have a question on page three and 01362170. And it's the live scan revenue. And I'm wondering if that matches one of the expenditure where it says live scan revenue. Is that a lie?
That's probably just the.
Just the mistake, yeah. And it says we only have $50. Is that the suggestion for that?
Yeah, this was a new fingerprint this year, right? And, yeah.
New in '22. New in '20, well, we started, he got the equipment in '22. We got the equipment in '22. And then some other people have used it, but it hasn't been a lot. Am I correct about that?
Actually, I've been using it quite frequently.
Okay.
We just have not seen the proceeds.
There we go, okay.
So we have been in touch with the county. The county is not, hasn't yet, hasn't yet.
Okay, and the county can be slow and so is the state.
But so that I understand, this is the thing that does the fingerprints, the photographs? Because I still haven't seen very many photographs, but I know you said it was some do, some don't.
Yes, it is a federal arrest.
All right, thank you.
01342, 201. I'm sorry, 202. Front Street property, says property to be sold by end of 2023. So I was thinking about that.
Good, I hope. That's, we have, we have signed all the paperwork to transfer that to the Columbia EDC. They are working with current owners now to get a deal together. The focus has been on the wastewater treatment plant. What I'm going is to wrap up and done, then we'll rebook on Front Street, Front Street.
Yeah, I talked to, I had a conversation with Bill Cloy after the September 11th drill service, the other week. And he said there's some, there were some things going on. Like the attorney said that the EDC needs different things from their board. Sort of like we need, you know, the resolution, and we need this and we need that. They need to get those things from their board before they're ready to have settlement. And they're working on getting those now, so it should not be much longer.
One of the things that has currently delayed the sale of the wastewater plant is there was a clause in the agreements with, was it? For the wastewater plant. There's a clause in two of the agreements. I think one of them is with the federal government or DCD or DPM. That they have to give a 30 day notice. So they had, and the notes had to be certain criteria. So we had to in writing send a letter to the two agencies saying there's an intent to sell these properties and then the lawyers have to look at it. So that has related to about the end of September. Right now, we're still waiting to get a response back from the state. So that one should close then early October.
Can you tell me what the difference is between, I'm still on page three, per rental revenue and rental inspection stretch? I mean, I know what rental inspection is, but what would the difference be between? Okay, so the per rental revenue is like the, let's see.
Oh, mine is like.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. Yeah, because everything else that we have rentals for like 137, they have their own classification.
Right.
This is just, that's cool. Any other revenue questions?
Do you have any?
All right.
This is just something that feels maybe you guys can put into the project. We're looking at rental inspections. Quick ticket revenue.
What's that, what's that grade?
Page three, three six, three four twenty-three.
It's 423, 424.
Right.
And then who times?
I do not, those are the general revenue that the code department sees, correct?
Yes.
I believe three of those make more than $46,000. Or.
Yeah, that's, that's a just, well, the one is, if you look at rental registration, that's.
Yeah, that's wrong.
Rental inspection revenue, $75,000. Oh, I'll say this, the code department, if you look at the cost versus the revenues, they actually generate enough to cover the cost of all of that.
They're actually the only department that does. As it should be, because per state law, our fees cannot.
Correct.
Generate revenue. They have to, they can only be used to pay for the services provided, so.
I understand, I just don't see it.
Oh, and the rental registration, the reason it's so low is because September is rental registration.
It's in the fall.
So that's why it's not on there.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay.
That rental registration is not codes. That's just standard checks.
Okay, but it's in the code, no, it's the revenue source in the code department that generates work.
I'm talking about what they do. And either way, the code department still require a $100 fee every year. So that would really not earn the, by codes. Quick ticket. And the rental inspections. The fire inspections are kind of a wash, because we've made somebody do that, correct?
Right now, we do, yes.
Yeah, so you get harder when we get harder and stuff.
Yeah, that's kind of a wash.
What's happened now is, we get harder than like, please play. So it's not a complete wash.
Okay. So really, combination. Probably only about $76,000 a year. And you add all your stuff and it looks like a hog, but I don't see it. That's my point of view. Figure that out, or let me discuss.
The $100 home inspection, that's the fire safety inspection? Be what used to be called the new home?
Now it's called, it's 362, 428 voluntary home inspections.
Yeah.
Right there.
Oh, okay.
What's it listing there?
What is miscellaneous revenue, page four, the 0138001?
Okay, that's standing. That's a very good question. That is, and we never go over, typically go over between $570,000. And that is typically like overdraft fees that people pay when their check bounces. That kind of stuff goes in there. Yeah, nothing major. Sometimes we get refunds from certain little things and it'll go in there. But the, I watch that account very closely.
Yeah, because I see there's one at the bottom too that says refunded prior year expenditure, but I don't know what that was either.
Right, and they're, and, yeah, and typically each department has that. Like if you look on the same page, three, 01363500, the highway department has, if they get a refund on something. And that would be typically, let's say Jake returned something in January for the prior year. You know what I mean? Something like that. That's where that stuff goes. And it stays pretty, it should stay low, but, but yeah, so that miscellaneous revenue, I watch that very closely. The auditor looks at that and so does the state very closely because we should not be having a bunch of miscellaneous revenue. Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions on the revenue side? Yes?
Somebody explain the community safety officer, the officer which is, is no longer moving to be in 2024. How's that income?
Because we pay it, but then we bill.
The school district.
The school district and they give us money. Similar to, so we bill them for their portion of it. Similar to the crossing guards.
We do that with the crossing guards as well.
Like we have the crossing guards on there as a revenue line item.
Isn't that also part of the police department expense, by the way?
Yes, because we do, we have.
Revenue versus expenses.
Yeah, we do, the whole thing is the expense, but then a portion of it comes back as a revenue.
Okay, so in government accounting, you can't take your revenue and hit your expense side. You have to have, you have to have a revenue account for every revenue that comes in. For example, we have police officers that cover the football game. So we bill the school district for that. And Jack and I have talked about this a lot because it would be great. He gets tons of donations for National Night Out, but he has to put that to his supplies. All the stuff he buys for that has to go to his supply. So you have to kind of look at the revenue and the expense together. In the government accounting world, that's how we have to do that.
Yeah, so what's the?
Does that make sense? It doesn't, but I'm still confused by it with its marks. But it looks like a positive.
Which page are you on?
Well, it is a positive because that's the amount we're getting from the school district.
Oh, wait a minute.
It has a negative because we're not getting it anymore.
Yeah, that's why in 24, we didn't budget any money for it.
Okay, all right.
All right, last call for the revenue. Moving on to expense. For this one, we'll start at the top, we'll just go down each thing. Account 400, which is general government, elected officials, so forth. Any thoughts, questions, comments, Eric?
Not this meeting.
All right, general government administration. This would include the borough manager and the stuff up front, so it's me.
Yeah.
Any questions there? And the, all the salaries have already been counted at 3%, which is contractual with the, with the union, with the non-uniform union. So that's what we have all the managers at.
For now, like I said, this is, this is the draft. So I put in 3% across the board on everything in the expense thing, where technically it's closer to 8%. So we'd like to hope that we can save even more money, but.
So I'm looking at 01402312 for IT contracted services. And I'm just wondering what the breakdown is for that $58,185. How do you arrive at that number?
Well, if you look at the current actuals, that's what we've spent to date. And the budget number is based on the contract we have existing. Mark would have more details on the breakdown, breakdown?
Sure. So several things hit this. It hits the actual contract services you have as an IT company to maintain our servers and our phone system. Our servers run around, or I say servers, all the computers here in the building, around $5,600 a month. The phone system is around $2,000 a month. So those are the two costs to maintain those two systems. We are in the process of contracting with the new company right now. They're actually coming in tomorrow to begin the migration and transition over. What also then hits that sometimes is the IT company helps us spec out new equipment, et cetera. A lot of that falls into that contract cost as well, depending on certain, if we need a new computer server, new firewall.
Do you, do you look for comps for your IT services? Do you shop around at all?
Yeah, we just did. We just went out and put out requests, when I didn't do a formal RFP, we went out and we interviewed three, four companies.
Four, five.
Yes, to get the best comparisons, not always the best price per se, but make sure we get the best service that we can possibly get to maintain it.
Have you looked into going cloud based versus servers?
Yes. That's, one of the things that we've talked about, I think there are several applications that that makes a lot of sense. You're not maintaining the cost of hardware here in the building.
Yes, sir.
We went with all servers two years ago. So they still have life left in them. I think when we get to the end of service life of that equipment, we'll probably look again at migrating more towards a cloud. It's, I was gonna say, it's just amazing the, the amount of things that are shifting and government has got to be the slowest in migrating to new technology. I get that. But so many, so many places are doing so much more electronically. We are working towards, which would be a huge leap for us, is starting to allow certain things to be paid online. I think that would be a nice step forward.
And we already, we are starting to do that more and more.
When you were getting bids from other companies, did you look at like the ones that are already in use, online payment programs and stuff with all the cities and towns around us? There's only like one or two. Was it just Edmonds then?
No, we did look at, we did, we looked at three or four different things. And Edmonds.
Yes. I'll say this, one of the things that has been a blessing about working here in Lancaster County is we have a great network of peers that we talk a lot. So I am constantly talking to other municipal managers about everything. An email thread went around today asking what software do we use for their finance? A lot of people, smaller municipalities are using book books. It's probably two or three using Edmonds, et cetera. When we started looking at online, going to online payments, we asked a lot of the municipalities, what do you use, what do you like, what do you don't like? Would you buy it again? Would you go somewhere different? So we do that as often as we can on this type of stuff.
Yeah, because there's one that really is about it, but I think there are four or five of them around us in the museum. That's great that you're all in communication like that.
Yeah, we learn from each other. I mean, sometimes it's a blessing, sometimes you get an email back like, don't ever try this. We tried it and failed miserably, don't do it.
I think our biggest thing when we were looking was, we want to find something that is not going to cause extra work on the backend and increase the costs by creating more work for the people here. And with Edmonds, it would be a more seamless integration to what we already have. And I really liked it. I liked their presentation. I thought their presentation was good.
I have a question regarding solicitor fee for 4314. It says requested new rate. So is that, like, is that in discussion? Do you discuss with him and you enter into a contract for the next year or?
You guys appoint him as the municipal attorney. It's not uncommon for them every now and then to adjust their hourly rates going forward. So we haven't gotten anything from Evan yet on if there's going to be a rate increase next year, but I think they're probably.
I request that from the engineer and from Evan every year since I've been here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Because I don't want any, I don't want any surprises.
Well, because we did hire them and, well, we didn't, but the prior council, I think in 19. And they were new. And I wondered how often we do look at, like now they've been with us for four years. I wondered how often we look at other options.
Yeah, I would say now, I mean, if you're going to look, I mean, I think budget time is the time.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, 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 I know, I know.
I like the idea of every so often, just going out and seeing what options are available. To simply get comfortable and say you have one, you're done. It's not, it's not a great, always a great business model. Sometimes you have a longstanding relationship with a firm, be it engineer, attorney. firm, be it engineer, attorney, whatever, that can be a blessing, because they have such institutional knowledge to work with, but you also want to make sure you're still getting the best value for your service.
I think the only one that we sign a multi-year contract with is the auditor.
Yes.
Because we have a contract with them for multi-year.
I'm not sure about that.
That's what we do year by year, actually, because each year we get a letter from them.
I do know that I, Mark talks to the borough managers, I talk to finance managers, and there's several accounting firms dropping out of government audit.
Yeah.
They're dropping like flies, and everybody's like saying, hey, who does your audit, who does your audit, who does your audit, so they can get a price on that, and I talked to our auditor, and she said she's had seven or eight requests for bids just in Lancaster County and a couple from York, because the, there's, the accountants don't want to do it anymore, it's a lot.
And it's, it's not just Lancaster County, it's called to different, throughout the state, and the same thing is happening with them as well.
Yeah.
What is line item 0142302, consulting services, but it doesn't really tell us, it just says $25,000, but not used yet, would that be?
I think that was something that, it was, it was something that Todd requested, which would have been for marketing and stuff like that, didn't we look that up? Yeah, you requested it last year, Todd.
Thanks for reminding me.
You're welcome.
It's unused.
Unused.
Unused so far.
Actually, I kind of think it's good to have that in there, even if we would lower it down to like 10,000 or something like that, so we have something to put in if we have to contract with something in an emergency situation, when we're not scrambling to put, you know, new, new, uh, there.
And why did the accounting and auditing services, usually we do pay around 16, I think, to our auditors, why did that go to like 43?
I don't know, I'm gonna have to look at that.
I mean, yeah, I have no idea what.
I'm just curious, because I think it's been 16 for a play on. I'll go check that, because I usually go by prior year numbers.
I don't know what happened.
Yeah, I'll double check and check that out. I'll check that, because yeah, if I can save money there, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you. And Tammy, I think the one that went out in the packet.
Yeah, I was just looking, I can't find the one where it made those changes from the other day, so I will, yeah.
Because one of the things that Tammy and I talked about was 402340 and 350, the printing and advertising and general communications, we added a, a line in the market house just for the market house, so some of those numbers are going to get shifted around, so we can make sure that the market house line item is paying for the market house and the rest is.
I think there was a sat there, and now we can't even find that one.
I know, and I didn't, I didn't work down the changes on my thing either.
Yeah, I have, I can look for you sometime.
21 and 22 accounting is already, is around $40,000 each of those two years, so basically in line.
So what was the accounting, is that something different aside from the audit?
Oh, I know where, I know where that, why it got so high, I know why it got so high, because in 21, we had that accounting firm
That's what it was.
covering when, after Kyle left.
Yes.
So we had the accounting firm
We put that in there.
And we threw it into that line item, so that's why our line item was so high.
But we haven't used them since then.
Oh, we have not used them since then, but that, we always, that's one of the line items that stays the same from year to year, so on 22, we just put it in what 21 was, see? Woo, I remember.
That's exactly what it was.
Yep.
Yeah, that is good, thanks for the
When was tax my government, was that last year?
Last year.
Yeah, so that's the reason for the big increase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Tammy, I see another one of those contracted services, this one says 29,000 on page seven, it says prior year, 01410317.
Okay, so that is for the police, yeah, and, and that's just, there's multiple things in there, so yeah, so that would be, I can't think of anything off the top of my head chief, but I know you have things that we have to pay annual fees for, so that's where all that stuff goes, so yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
409, 227, 231, where would those lines be for?
They were not.
Right, but what, what was that?
Okay, so, okay, so while the tools and supplies went into probably maintenance and repair buildings, and Wilson asked for a separate line item to keep better track, and then the gasoline and vehicles went under public works.
I think public works.
Public works, yeah, we, they absorbed Wilson's, but we're still trying to make sure all the departments have the
All the costs.
All the costs in the proper center, so.
But then 409370, it goes up to 25,000?
Yeah, the reason, and this year, yeah.
Then the 108, 108%? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's the increase, the reason why is because Wilson sees some things, and things are gonna need repair, they should have some roofing, and yeah, just basically to have a cushion, because this, we're only to the end of August, and there's some things.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, now, I have another one.
Get going, get going, that's what we're here for.
That's right.
Okay, this one is on page 11, 01450101, the HARP, they still have that 1,500 in there, and I'm, I guess I should bark about that, because we've talked about them making some sort of literature or something to alert the realtors and people who are purchasing houses in the historic district, and I think that would maybe, at least possibly remedy some of these people going forward without a hard review, and then it's hard to backtrack that and then compare it all for redoing.
So Sharon Sino, I always remember, you pointed out that I had to say which Sharon I'm talking about on these things, because sometimes I just, I forget to put the last initials on, Sharon Sino and I were just talking about that, about the house down in the 100 block of Locust Street, and sometimes people start working on projects not knowing that they're in the historic district, that's not a great example, because they applied the HARP for their windows, and then expanded their project without letting us know, but because of that discussion, we talked about putting together a flyer, postcard, and mail in that we could send out, use that money in this thing to say, hey, are you aware your property is located within the historic district, here's some information, basic information, and for more, you know.
Yeah, we've talked about that before, so I, I don't quite understand why you haven't used the money and done something, because we need something that, even if it's something that goes on the front door when the house goes on the market or something, somehow there needs to be some communication there, if we're going to continue to have a viable HARP, I just think we need to, to use that, and instead of, I'm sorry.
So Sharon and I are looking at getting something out this fall to, to send a quick notice to every property in the, in the historic district, just to remind them they're in there, and here's the procedure you have to follow.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
But I do think Sharon's right, I mean, there does need to be some sort of, of, you know, touch at the point if we realize, you know, there's, there's something going on, like there's, something's being sold, or whatever, there has to be a way we can let people know, I mean, it should be in the appraisal though, like in the historic district or something like that, I think it is.
Doesn't always pick that up.
And sometimes I'm confused with who's are in and out, so I could see people from maybe out of the area purchasing and not knowing.
And not all realtors disclose that, or even look at that.
Right, right, okay, well, thank you.
Go ahead. Line item 01444340 on page 10, I see we added market house advertising?
Yes.
So is that, so I think that didn't exist in 2020, did it, 2022?
That is correct.
That is correct, and actually, that's what I was just saying, it was, a lot of that money was put into
402.
Into the 402 account, and we wanted to break that out this year.
We no longer have a fire department gassing up with a borough car, right?
No.
No, because of single contribution, we give along some, you know.
Correct.
What's 431471, what's the borough, what's the interest?
Cars.
Cars.
What was all the, for a car?
Yeah, and the police cars, and if you, if you load each department that has vehicles, we'll have that in there.
So we started back in 2021, we contracted with Enterprise to get out of buying vehicles and into a lease program, so we have, I would say probably a year and a half left, and we will have migrated out all of our borough owned vehicles for the municipal.
No, that does not include the highway, specialized equipment for the highway department.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
But pickup trucks, you know, police, police cars.
The police cars, the tow cars, that are all those are now.
Yes, the police cars as well, yeah.
And it actually, it actually results in equal savings, because Enterprise will watch the market and tell us when the resale value is high, we turn in the vehicle, get a new one, it reduces our, it cuts down on our maintenance and repair costs, plus it cuts down on the gas mileage, the gas costs, because newer vehicles tend to get better gas miles than the older vehicles, so, and then whatever money comes in from the auction of those used vehicles gets applied to our lease, our new leases, so it actually works out.
Our best example, and it happened once, but we can still claim it happened, we had about a 10-year-old pickup truck in the butt first department, that when we sold, Jay, it was a matter of about $1,000 versus what we paid for 10 years ago, we sold it for this year.
Last year, we sold it in 2022.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that, about how many vehicles are we talking?
We have 18 total vehicles in the lease thing, somewhere in there, yeah. A lot of municipalities are going this way, it really seems to be a new program, and saves money in the long term.
The only thing not included in that is upfitting for the police cars, which is like all the specialized stuff that police cars need, and also the signage on the outside and, you know.
And some of the specialized applows and other things to get for the bumper trucks, et cetera.
If we had one super mine, we brought a lot of equipment and vehicle over from the which for the shipping plant, grabbed it over into the highway department, so we duplicated a lot of our vehicle.
Well, at this point, we've, we've
We've thin those out.
We've thin those out, I mean, we've gotten rid of what we don't need. So one thing that I would like to be able to have a discussion on is our contributions and community investments. I, first of all, now that we've gotten the CCAT moved out from under us, and they're generating funds on their own and so forth, I think the contribution to that needs to go way down, I don't have a problem when we have $6,600 for the animal shelter, and then we give $5,000 to the library, I kind of think that's upside down, I mean, we've gotten the, the cats going in the direction they need to go, and I don't think we need to be the sole source of funds anymore on that.
We have given to the library a number of years though, that, and wasn't there a large contribution?
There was, because of the capital campaign when they created the library, but I'll tell you, Mark actually, in, in doing research for the budget and stuff earlier this year, he sent, he sent a survey out to the different municipalities that, you know, we all work together, and asked them how much they give to different organizations, the fire department, if they give to the ambulance, if they give to the library and so forth, he broke it down per capita, and I'll tell you, Chloe Byrd per capita, the amount we give to the library is pitiful compared to even really small municipalities like Adams Town, you know, and stuff, I mean.
So how shy are we?
Are they complaining?
How shy are we?
I'm pretty shy, I have to look at that thing again, no, they're not complaining, but I'm just saying that I, I would rather, yeah.
They're very grateful, they sent us all a letter thanking us for their contribution, so the library is very grateful.
I think the library is one of the hidden gems in this town, they, they really do, they do a heck of a job with all of their programming and, especially over the summer, you know, and when they do, like right now, they're doing the touch a truck again with the, or with the trash trucks, I think that's awesome, and when they do touch a truck with the police cars, I think it's awesome.
So I agree with you on that, CCAT, not sure they can sustain, if you take, well, 300 cats a year?
Well, we, we got about, I think we're around 250 now, and that's in the, we're in the second year obviously, so, but that's a lot of cats in that amount of time that we've
What I'm saying is, at $40, $45 a cat?
Well, not anymore, I mean, it is if we take them to York or Lancaster SPCA, but on the weeks we take them now to Columbia, we are not charged that.
What do you charge now?
You mean if we take them to York or Lancaster?
Columbia.
Nothing now.
They're under the Columbia.
Now, Allen is the chair, I don't want to speak out of turn, he is planning to come and present to council where we're at with everything to bring us up to speed, but I will say that I don't think that, you know, maybe 66 is a little high for us at this point, since we're under there, I don't think that anybody's going to object to it going a little lower, but I, I really do think that we should keep contributing, because we are using their services.
There's a public safety
It is public safety, health and safety, and I really feel strongly that if anybody would see the amount, and you might, I'm not sure if you're on the CCAT email, but it's almost, I would say, several times a week that we get people emailing us, oh, we found a cat here, or we have kittens there, or can you help us here, some are out of the borough, and we have to tell them no, and guard them to other services, maybe in their area, or someone that can help, but there is a great need for this, and if we back down, I mean, if you just think a little bit about 250 cats, how many they could have reproduced, you know, by now, we would still be just, you know, in a real mess, but, and I'm not saying that 250 solving the problem, we still got a long way to go, but I just think we should give them something, I'm not saying 6,600, but.
Yeah, I'm not saying we don't give them anything, I'm just saying, I, you know, I don't think that, I don't think it should be 6,600.
I don't think Allen would ask for that either, according to what I've heard of meeting.
Right, I think he's being very reasonable about, but we are going to be meeting with Tammy at the shelter, the CEO, or whatever her title is, manager, we're going to be meeting with her to kind of talk about that kind of thing, and, you know, how much we would be to sustain.
I must say, there's still a group of enthusiastic volunteers at these meetings and gas, and new ones, new ones too.
Right, right, we're trying to get really organized, we have a, a new gentleman who is our scheduler now, and he's doing a great service for us there, but it is truly, truly a community service, there's no question about that, and it's, it's a lot of physical labor that goes into it, and, you know, it's just something I think that if we didn't have.
So one thing that you guys asked last year, and I'd like to schedule it in one of our upcoming workshops, I didn't want to do it tonight, is to have the different organizations come in and just talk to us, and they'd like to, and present, you know, even if to tell us what they're doing and how they benefit the community, so.
I like that.
I get that scheduled for the upcoming October workshops, you guys can hear from them before we finalize things. I get that scheduled for an upcoming October workshop, you guys can hear from them before we finalize things.
Good, thanks.
Should we require them to present, to consider?
That's your call, I was going with the approach of offering it to them if they'd like to come in.
They used to do it years ago, yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
I do too, because then we kind of know where they're at, what they're doing.
So we'll get that scheduled.
Is this a good time to make my request?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I think I just read here for you guys. I'm just gonna read, if I do better, I read, then I don't miss anything. Okay, I think I'm referring to line item 423001, Human Services Community, is that where you put the $500 that I requested last year?
Yes, it's 423, yep, that's Human Services, you betcha, that's where it is.
Okay, the free task force, which is education and employment for everyone for reducing the poverty rate in Columbia, began its efforts in July of 2022. In the past, we partnered with CDC and CareLink to host a recruitment and job fair. We have once again partnered with them for another fair in October and have added continuing education opportunities. We hosted a pop-up session at the Market House entitled "From Lack to Livelihood," where three individuals shared how they pulled themselves out of poverty. We developed and distributed surveys that would allow us to have some data regarding the obstacles that those living in poverty households need to overcome to advance financially. We partnered with the South Hill Street Block Party and distributed surveys and promoted the distribution of health materials to the community. Although the team is committed to this endeavor, we have not had the community response we hope to obtain. Recently, I learned of a project conducted by Urban Institute that researched and implemented a process for increasing income ability in specified locations. They have developed a plan guide for local governments to take action towards promoting financial success for citizens. Through the guide they developed, through the guide they developed, we can better understand the obstacles to upward mobility for Colombians and build a cross-sector team that can plan, advocate for, and implement a set of system changes focused on bringing all members of our community out of poverty. This is done through developing a mobility action plan built around a three-part definition developed by the Institute regarding mobility from poverty, which is economic success, power and autonomy, and being valued in community. Everyone deserves a chance to improve their lives, to move up and out of poverty, be valued and feel they belong, and have the power and autonomy to shape the decisions that affect their future. But people striving to achieve upward mobility face a web of interconnected barriers that often hinder or undermine their best efforts. Policies and programs aimed at helping people navigate existing systems provide benefits to some individuals and families that leave barriers in place for many others. For example, an issue such as low workforce participation may stem from a combination of low education rates, poor transit access, unreliable and unaffordable childcare options, and low wages. Solving such a multi-faced problem requires working across systems to address intersecting and compounding issues. Increasing workforce participation, for example, may call for a transportation department to both expand public transit access along its existing lines and collaborate with the housing department to align new residential developments with these transit options. In turn, the housing department may collaborate with childcare providers to determine where to locate childcare centers. We propose to use the information provided by Urban Institute's Local Planning Guide and adapt the information to fit the infrastructure of Columbia, along with the needs of our citizens, and develop a mobility action plan. A mobility action plan or map is a document that details the strategic action we will take to boost upward mobility in our community. It is a process that will include cross-sector partners and community members, collaboration with stakeholders from government, nonprofit and community-based organizations, advocacy groups, charitable entities, research organizations, anchor institutions such as the school district and the private sector. In the handout you received, you will see at the top the three-part definition of mobility from poverty. Underneath are three subtitles that show the elements needed in order to achieve upward mobility, and underneath that are predictors that are associated with each element. On the back of the page, metrics are stated that will allow us to measure our success and failures. We will use data to prioritize areas of greatest need, set targets, and monitor progress, have community engagements that will allow community members to make decisions that affect their future, advocate for any systems changes that need to occur, partner with different types of stakeholders, and continually learn and improve where our data determines improvement is needed. The newly adopted comprehensive plan will provide for us important data already compiled for moving our community forward. Although I do not know at this point the financial investment needed to move forward, I do intend to research grant and reward opportunities. Currently, I am pursuing a Shaping Tomorrow 2024 Award from Lancaster County Community Foundation, and I am asking that you consider budgeting $5,000 towards this community development effort in the new budget. And the reason why I'm asking is because they say for the first step, if you don't have government buy-in, you might as well just forget the whole thing. So that's why I'm bringing this whole plan before you now, and hoping that you would consider that.
Barb, if you give me all that information, I'll get it out to council to kind of reread it, digest it.
Sure. Absolutely.
So you guys asked earlier about what the per capita giving is for different things, the column, I'll say it once in the center, if you look at the top is the library giving, we give about 49 cents per capita, other ones give a dollar, $1.50, some give $4 per capita, so you can see the variation in what they give. And I can, again, send this out to you guys if you want to see it. That's the first group, and then there's more of them here. So something to think about, I can, I'll, like I said, I'll sum it up, some of your information tomorrow, and you guys can digest all this. Well, Barb, thanks for reading that up, I think that's definitely something to look at, I think then the ability for us to to assist our residents and partner in a way that we can, I think it's a good thing.
Where do they fall in on the yes list to donate to them? Are they a nonprofit?
Well, that's part of our, that's part of our government.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because it's not a separate group, it's part of our government.
Okay.
Yes.
Were we getting copies of all their budget?
You can see them all on their websites, yes.
They don't present any to the borough?
What's that name?
They're all other municipalities.
Yeah, this is other municipalities.
That's all other municipalities.
I'm talking about the people that we donate to.
Yeah.
Do they give the, turn their budgets in to the borough?
No, they do not.
We can, we have the right to ask for them.
How do we know where they stand?
Well, that's why I thought it'd be good to have.
Just how much they need more money, maybe they don't. Without looking at the budget and how they spent last year or whatever they did, that would be nice to know.
And that's why I want to have them all come in, and they can, they can answer these questions for us.
We used to hand our budget in to the borough, while we used to do our presentations here, our budget was always attached to the address.
I didn't know if they still did that.
Most do if they want money.
Yeah.
They're both words.
I have some questions, looking down through, I don't know if anyone noticed, in the different sections has how many employees are listed for each thing. Under police, public safety police, we only have two sergeants, are we replacing that third sergeant? Why, what is, I mean, I'm not quite sure if I just need to.
We're in the testing process as we speak, we'll review, we'll conduct you the one on October 5th, and then I'll come to council probably later October with one over in two names. I think what we actually need to consider is, and council's not aware, they will be made aware next Tuesday, we will have two additional officers take, become involved with the draw program. So we'll ask council to consider that on Tuesday, one is a sergeant.
Well, so my question is, in our budget, we only have two sergeants, shouldn't we have three? Do we need to increase that line item, or will we keep an extra?
I'm recommending that we actually have four.
So you want me to add a few more?
That's right.
Gotcha.
Is there any other changes you want to talk about now, or would you like a way to talk to our two? No, I mean, okay.
In terms of budgeting, if we know what the staffing needs are.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at staffing needs, I mean, I need to know what the staffing need is to put in the budget.
Okay, so that's what Jack and I will need about that, that because it will affect other categories on the budget, so that's. Yep, that's what I, that's what I'll need to know, so, okay, we'll talk. Thank you.
And the other thing, I'm just throwing this out there so everyone keeps it in mind, the uniform contract is under negotiation right now, so that may or, so these numbers probably may or may not be accurate. That's what I'm saying.
They're just a guess at it right now, because we still have things that are up in the air.
Right.
Yep.
And I'm not sure if anyone, also in the, which one is it? Control count 413?
Page.
Page eight. There is, in the code compliance, there is a request for another full-time property inspector. So I just wanted to make sure that was pointed out as well. Oh, Tammy. Oh, wait, never mind, my bad. I saw the line item for TNR, and I didn't go over it before, and I didn't see that it was taken.
Moving it from there to the donation section.
That's awesome. Two years ago when I requested that line, I don't know what it was like.
I know.
Yeah, I never imagined it would
become a great program.
I know. Are there any other questions on expenditures? Yes.
On the packet that I picked up, the last item on there is 140414195. I've got some numbers that you gave me at the council meeting, and I missed so much that you didn't give me until I just got this right here. Does everybody get what I get, does council get what I get, or do they get this right here?
Um, they get the packet.
There's a bunch of pages that I didn't get.
What do you mean?
There's a bunch of numbers I didn't get, I only got nine pages here, and the last number that I got was 1414195, that's what I was given today. And here, the last number here is 1491.
Are those pages double-sided?
Yes.
The smaller signs?
Yes.
I don't know how they read.
I got nine pages.
Okay, there's probably 11 pages, I think.
It's not here or where.
Actually, it was 12.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know, I didn't.
You picked that up, right, Frank? You picked it up at the office, maybe, yeah.
Today, I usually wait as long as I can, so if any change is right there, I can get them.
Yeah, I don't know how, Frank, that's, what council got is the large sheets that you have in front of you now, I don't know why you missed some, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, well, they never offered that, no.
I just like it better because you didn't receive.
It's a little bit like what Becky had read, you know, why didn't we get that in a package, so we study that.
She presented it tonight, and that's what I said, I'll get it out to everybody, and we'll discuss it again.
Frank, I was gonna do it next week, and they suggested I do it tonight, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Heather, would this be the time for suggestions?
Yes, this is, yep, this is what we're doing, that's what this is for. I told Tammy, I said, get a document ready and start making notes.
I'm ready.
One of the things, well, I'm not sure, but something to add would be to consider investing in a signage, digital sign for the borough as a means of communication with the residents and/or wherever we place it, that it would be in a good spot for people driving through, for events, for announcements, and other things. It would be capital, right?
Yeah, that would be capital, but that could be.
We have, we actually have that part of the second phase of the Market House, so it is in there, we just haven't got the money yet to be able to do that.
Now, for the Market House, would it be?
No, it's all signage across the borough.
So it's for the RACPE grant, that half of it, or that I'll say Phase 1, that's what they have. Phase 1 made for the renovations of the Market House, once we get clearance on Phase 1, we'll go into Phase 2. What we have proposed, and you may not have been on council, it's been that long, as we put our list together, is doing some improvements. One of the big things was a signage package that would include welcome signs. We had talked about putting welcome signs on Third when we come in, on Lex Avenue, possibly down on Front Street. Welcome to Columbia as you come in through, kind of a greeting. We also talked about wayfinding signs, so once you're here, how do you get to public parking, how do you get to the Market House, how do you get to some key things throughout town? One of those signs that we initially programmed would be a digital sign down at River Park that could be used to announce updating current events, something's coming up, avoid the river, it's high, et cetera, it's all kind of information we can put on there. So that is in the program for maybe two or three.
Okay.
Totally agree, and if one more than one.
Yeah, I guess what I was thinking of is a well-traveled intersection, or however, yeah, that is not out of the way.
We thought initially down at River Park, because so many people pass through there, guests and well-oiled residents, that's a good location. I don't necessarily want it where people are driving a lot, because I don't want it to be a distraction. You know, you drive by, you catch something, you want to go back and see it, so I want it to be at a place where people can actually stop where you look at it, but yeah, I disagree, I think.
How would you define well-traveled? What numbers people want to drive there?
That's a good question. I guess, well, for example, 462 goes through town, preferably not a side street. But for instance, 462 and Locust is a well-traveled intersection. Whether there's room for us to be able to put a sign there, I don't know. But that's, that's an intersection that would come to mind.
Here, where you want to put that is up Turkey Hill Express. Some of the people they've been getting there, they need to know where Columbia is at, and even know that it's in Front Street, shopping, you know.
That's true, yeah.
Anything else?
Heather, I have one here. According to what I see on the Market House advertising, a new item, $10,000, haven't we been doing penny advertising?
Yes, we have, and it was in a different line item. Further up, it was in
402.
402 control count. It was under. Yeah.
So the idea, Frank, was to, we.
402, 340, and 350, it was split in there between printing and advertising and general communications. And that also includes the text my gov subscription, the. And that also includes the TextMyGov subscription, the newsletter, the website upkeep, and fees.
So given we made a new line item, is it because of the amount? Why did we make a new line item?
So because we wanted to separate it out so we can keep better track of each, the cost for each department so that I can actually say to you, this whole group of, of line items is where the Market House and not have it be all over the place. Any other questions on the expenditures for general fund? Any thoughts?
Digest it, go back, read it again, stare at it a couple times, hold it upside down.
Do you have any questions that Tammy or I know?
And then, like I said, this is just the first flush, we'll update to get the final numbers corrected. And you'll be seeing this again when we get it done.
All right. Where are council comments?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
None.
I just want to thank the candidates for showing up tonight. I think it's really great that you're here and participating. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank Mark and Tammy for putting together a easy-to-understand presentation with all the categories clearly upon, and it keeps us from swimming too much, thank you.
I do want to say something. Welcome back, Tammy.
Aw, thank you.
I know, I miss her too. I'm just glad Mark didn't kill the plant by giving her.
Me too.
Funny why she was gone, but other than.
I just want to echo a thank you to Mark and Tammy. Over the last year, Tammy has really done a good job in getting, in getting our expense lines and our revenue lines aligned with the state chart of accounts. That was not always the case in the past, it was kind of all over the place. So she's really worked to get us looking more like all the other municipalities in Pennsylvania instead of doing our own rules. And she's also, you know, been able to humor my whims when I say, hey, can we see how much this is? Can we see this? One of the things I asked for this week was, show me what our expenses were versus how much our, how much our tax comes in and what's that percentage so that we could see that. And in fact, Tammy, can we send that out to all?
I absolutely can send it out to everybody.
So you guys can see where our, where our assessed value has been. You can see how it's increased slightly, but our, we've kept our, we've kept our expenditures fairly flat as well. So you can see that, you know, like I said, she's, and our, last year during budget, budget season, we, we had talked about having a consultant come in and help us with things. And after talking with the auditor and some other people, it was determined that hiring someone to come in and tell us what we already knew was probably not the wisest use of funds. One of the things that we knew they were going to ask us to do is break out each department, which is part of the reason why realigning the budget is so important, to have things in the right line of. Tammy was able to break out each department to show how much revenue and what the expenses are so we can see where we are. That's how we're able to conclusively say, excuse me, that the codes department brings in more money than what we pay out to maintain that department. So she's done a great job with that as well, and we can send those to you guys if, any, would you like to see those as well? Yes, yeah, send those out.
Awesome. I did review them. Okay, those are twenty-twenty-two, so I took every expense and every revenue and I tried to match it up to where it's supposed to be. May I ask a question about sending these out? Oh, that's right, Barb, I have to say, what about we print, um.
I can email them to you guys all, just all of you guys, however that's.
Well, you're already gonna have the computers for how long.
They're usually done by evening. I, I don't expect to have a long time.
Except by Monday, we'll have them back.
Friday afternoon, Friday morning.
He wants to print it, not me.
Yeah. But yeah, so.
That's funny.
My inbox is like, my inbox is awful right now.
So on that note, a note to everybody, the new IT company you see them is, is here tomorrow morning very early to begin the, the migration to the new company.
So don't email Mark because we want to be like, run around with terror fire.
That's every day. I don't know how much air left.
I'll tempt the terror fire.
We will work as diligently as we can to make it as smooth as possible. I've been through several of these, air's not as smooth as a freshly milled road. A lot of potholes and dents and, and all kinds of things. We will do our best to keep everything up and functional tomorrow. If you don't hear from us, or if you email someone and you don't hear something back right away, give us time, we'll get back to you. It's gonna be a visitor tomorrow, and then switch over.
All right, and on that note, we have the next meeting at seven PM on September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Council will hold our regularly scheduled meeting. I have a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by councilperson.
Paul Smith.
Second by councilperson, stall to adjourn at eight forty PM. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Well, yeah, I know, I normally shove all in.
There's a war coming, making out.
I can't do that.
There's a war coming, making out.